All those committed to advancing the fight against this cancer through research of advocacy and quality care. Now therefore, I'm Ronnie Williams Jr., Mayor and the Natchitoches City Council do hereby proclaim, proclaim September twenty, two thousand twenty-five as ovarian cancer awareness month in the city of Natchitoches and encourage all citizens to honor ovarian cancer patients, survivors, their families and caregivers. And remember those who have lost their lives to this devastating disease signed by Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. And I'm, I move for adoption of proclamation number zero seven nine, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion made a second and we've got Mrs. Leah Lentz here. She comes every year. And I really appreciate her once again for bringing attention to this particular disease. And so, Mrs. Lentz, again, we appreciate, you know, with children and word. It's, it's hard to push a call sometimes, but you do that faithfully. And so, we're, we're grateful in the city of Natchitoches for you doing that. So, just want you to state your first and last name and just share any, anything you want to share, something old, something new, whatever it is you want to share with us.
First and last name, Leah Lentz. Yeah, I got that. Anything else? My birthday? No, we're good.
You can drop it in your social though.
No, 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 probably done that. Uh, thank you. Thank you all for having me here. We've been working on this for fifteen years, which is incredible, right?
That's awesome.
And consistently through this, the, the big piece that's made it work is connection. I'm not a gambler, but I would wage that everyone in this room has lost someone they've loved. And in knowing what that's like, you know that having support and having connection and having access to healthcare is essential. So whether it's ovarian cancer or anything that you or others and people you love are struggling with, the number one thing is for you to check in with yourself and trust yourself and your intuition. Because it is true that early prognosis is the best diagnosis, but that's true with almost anything. So whether it's ovarian cancer or next month we're looking at breast cancer or whatever it is that you or your family might be dealing with, I want to just encourage you in this window I have to trust your intuition, to lean into your community, to talk with the health professionals that are here. There are nurse practitioners, there are doctors here that will help you, that will help your family members and help you move forward to whatever support you need. So, most importantly, just stay connected and our community has helped us continue to raise awareness for a long time now. So, thank you to Natchitoches, thank you to Northwestern State University. They're gonna have the teal, the, the columns turn teal. Look into my husband, yes? Yes, they are, okay. Through the month of September. And also to LSMSA, they're very supportive as well. I ask y'all on this Tuesday, tomorrow, please wear teal. Every time we raise awareness, I hope that will help you to have a conversation with others in your family. Because that's really the best way you can know how to increase awareness and arm yourself is to talk with your family, stay connected, be active in your community and, and reach out to your health professionals whenever you believe something's just not quite right. And I have prizes for y'all, of course.
Can you hold the, is that a ribbon? Hold it up.
This is, uh, this is a compilation of ribbons over, over many, many years. You'll see these ribbons across town, a little fewer this year, but they'll be back on, on all the poles hopefully next year. Uh, but we have ribbons through the community on the bridge. You'll see them on campuses of LSMSA and Northwestern and a couple of other little spots. We, we were a little bit slower this year, but we're gonna be on it early for September first. Um, so I'm just very grateful for this opportunity. But teal is the color for ovarian cancer awareness and that's why any shade will do. Just every Tuesday you want to turn teal. That would help to increase awareness.
I'll wear teal tomorrow.
I'm gonna give you a ribbon to do that. So you'll have a great, and you all in the audience will also get a ribbon as well. But thank you so much. I appreciate y'all. And thank you, Ms. Stacy. You always keep me straight. Thank you. I need her in all aspects of my life.
We all do.
Look, uh, council, any other comments or anything? Again, Miss, Mrs. Lentz does this every year and we're just so grateful for you bringing attention to this, um, this particular sickness. So, uh,
Thank you.
Did we, did we motion a second? Did we do that? Oh, we got a motion a second? All right, any, any comments, questions here? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All righty, that motion carries. Mrs. Lentz, we'd like to get a picture with you, um, in this proclamation. Thanks again, okay?
I think she, yeah.
All right, thanks a lot. Really appreciate it. Thank you all. All right, that is so wonderful to be that dedicated. Fifteen years. Fifteen years, wow. All right, uh, next on the agenda, we've got an item that's up for final. We introduced it last time we met, of course, and this time it's under the, um, it's, it's Councilman Nelson's assignment. So Councilman Nelson, it's on you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number thirty-one of two thousand twenty-five. Ordnance, amending ordinance number sixty-four of two thousand one by changing zoning classification of property described as follows. Lots sixty-nine feet front on West Side Williams Avenue, north by Philip, south by Lemoine, west by Kane River Lake from R one to R one. Special exception, reason, operation of short-term rental, four thirty-four Williams Avenue. Whereas Planning Commission of the City of Natchitoches, State of Louisiana has recommended at their meeting of September two, twenty twenty-five that the application of John Marston Fowler to rezone the property described above from R one to R one, special exception to operate a short-term rental be approved. This ordinance was introduced on September eight, twenty twenty-five and published in the Natchitoches Times on September thirteen, twenty twenty-five. I move to adopt ordinance number thirty-one of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made a second and I think the comment was made Councilman Harrington is that there are other S T Rs in the area already, so it kind of fits the, um,
Character.
That's the key word, the character, right? So, um, but any additional comment? I know he, he, he likes to say that one. Any additional comment about this particular item? And we've got a picture of where the residence is. We'd like to give you those pictures just for the visual, um, advantage that it gives us. All right, uh, seeing no other question or comment. Chantrelle, you're good? No comment on your end?
Nothing else said.
All right. All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion, uh, carries. All right, next we have an item that's slated on the agenda to be for introduction. But council, we're gonna act, ask you to, what are we asking to move it off for today?
Um, yes.
All right, Alex, you want to explain why that is?
Yeah. That's ordinance number thirty-two. So this is the one that Tommy was working on and, um, there was a couple of adjustments he wanted to make to it. We spoke on Friday and I think he sent an email on Monday, um, mentioning it to Stacy. But we just asked to take it off and I think the adjustment is he wanted a, a property survey done to make the char, the boundaries more specific. So we're gonna make that adjustment, put it on next, next council.
Okay. Any question about that, council? I know that's kind of fresh to you and new to you. Uh, we do have Mr. Briggs who's here. Mr. Briggs, raise your hand. I think he's been before us before on another issue. So, but survey is what we wanted to do that we don't have now. Is that the main thing, Alex?
Um, yes, and we wanted to take a look at the, the rental rate to make sure the rental rate was commensurate with the, the boundaries of the building, so.
Where is this?
I think we, we had some question of what is it? Where specifically is it?
Yeah, it's the building that,
Property?
That Public Works used to, use as a lounge. So, yeah, we'll, we'll have a picture for you, um, when it comes back. But it's the one that's kind of closest to the riverside. It's the smaller building.
Strip building?
Yeah, metal building.
Skinny, one story?
Right, yeah, it, it, it's one of the smaller buildings, but it's, the, the smallest metal one is what it is.
It's closest to the road by the office.
Mm-hmm.
Where?
The, the old Way M Scale Office?
In the Mill District.
In the Mill District.
I, I had concerns how this, this read too, cause it, um,
Says lease purchase.
It's, it's to lease it and further entering a purchase agreement and further providing a change in zoning. But we can't, like, they have to go to planning and zoning first. That'd be a separate deal, wouldn't it, from leasing?
Yeah, I, I spoke to, I didn't bring it up right now, but.
So it would, it would probably read different.
So, yeah, I think that's one, that, that may be one of the things that need to be changed too. Okay?
Um.
All right, but I know that survey and.
So basically, it was a Bobo put on agenda.
It was just, it was just pre, it was just too early.
So we had.
Okay, okay.
So y'all had Mr. Briggs to come here early.
And for.
And I, I can get you council one minute.
Since it's coming back before us too, um, between here and then, is it, since we're leasing public property, I mean, I look at it as if I'm leasing a building I own. I want to know the business plan for it.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'd like to, I'd like us to have something with that as well, some actual. I remember when we did it with the, the brewery years ago, I mean, they had their whole business plan laid out, their drawings, what it's gonna be. I mean, they had the whole, whole deal for it.
There is a business plan that Mr. Briggs has and I didn't want to share without him giving permission. But certainly that's why I kind of wanted to acknowledge him. Um, and he might be willing to share that with y'all, but, uh, but if you're able, Mr. Briggs, can you stay around for a little bit after the meeting night? Maybe you can't. If you can't, that's fine, but, uh.
We got time between here and there.
Yeah.
Please do.
Well, let me see, Alex, can we do that if it's not on the agenda?
No.
Yeah, we're just gonna move it off.
Between here and there.
Yeah, we, 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 we'll get there, okay? We'll get there, all right?
I make a motion to remove ordinance thirty-two from the agenda.
Second.
All right, motion made a second and again, for the reasons that we listed earlier is why we asking you council to do that at this particular time. All right? Okey-dokey. Any comment or question about this particular motion? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, moving on, we do have another item that's on for introduction and it's gonna stay on for introduction, all right? Uh, but it's read by Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance authorizing an amendment, uh, franchise in favor of Paul's Party Boat to operate a tour boat business within the city limits of the city of Natchitoches. Confirming the term of the franchise, franchise conditions and consideration for the said franchise and authorizing the mayor to execute the said franchise agreement on behalf of the city, providing for advertising, further providing for severability and further providing for a repeal and effective date of the ordinance. And this is ordinance number zero three-three. It's for introduction only.
Yeah, introduction, as Councilman P T said, we know Mr. Paul, uh, Lord with the Queen, uh, with the Kane River Queen. I think there's another boat that he has down there. This is to add a third boat, I, I believe. So, so, Mr. Paul, we want you to go on and come forward. I know you've been before us before, but if you would come and just kind of, uh, share with us and explain exactly, refresh our memories, I guess I can say, about this. Please state your first and last name and get into your remarks with.
Okay, I'm Paul Law, and I own the Kane River Queen, which is actually my, name of my company is Paul's Party Boats. And it's my fault, I kind of, we got a little gap here, about a month, where I presented everything to y'all, but I wasn't, I didn't have my stuff together, so we kind of missed a, a week there. But anyway, what we want to do here, I've got a smaller boat. Now see, this boat here, we have to have a full crew. And on a smaller boat, which is under the, what they call the six-pack rule, you can only have six passengers, but you don't have to have a crew. And it'll help our business and it'll help provide more for the city too, because I can hang out down there during the day when it's slow during the week. There's a lot of people that walk up and I can't just afford to pay a crew member to hang out all week long. So, I can be down there and, and somebody walk up, two, three to six people, and I can take them a boat ride. And, um, actually you said two boats. The third, what the deal is with that, I've got one boat complete. It's in the shop. It's complete. I like this finishing touches. But, and I went ahead, so we don't have to go through all this again, I've got another boat. It's a miniature tugboat, but it's same deal with the, uh, six-pack rule. But we won't never have more than two boats. The big boat will always be there, but the little boat, we might want to swap them out a little bit. And, uh, so, that's really what that's about. And we can use it at Christmas festivals too, to do the overflow. And, uh, because we get busy and when I first came, the first year I came here, we were turning people away. And when we come in, we got a pontoon boat that we can use now. It's, it's on the agenda, I mean, on the, uh, franchise. But, uh, that's just a plain, simple boat that everybody's got and mine look unique, more to the river. So we're gonna not use the pontoon boat and use this other boat, which is a side paddle wheeler. And the one that I won't really have complete till next spring, it's a miniature tugboat. It looks like a little antique tugboat. And we're gonna just swap them out. So there won't be more than one boat, I mean, more than two boats on the riverfront at a time. Uh, one small one and a big one. So, uh, if you got, anybody have any questions?
I mean, for us, I think you've shown us pictures and everything. I think it looks really good. So you have three, but you won't, only two will be in operation.
Yes, only two, because I've got another captain, you know, my first mate, she's a captain too. She has a hundred-ton master's captain's license, so what I can do, like, if we get busy, I've got another first mate, it's just the first mate can be with me on the Queen and she can run a small boat if we get real busy, like, at Christmas festival. So that's, and we don't have to turn anybody away. Cause people come down here and like I said, Rick Rowe, you know, I'm on his show every, every year in front of, before the Christmas festival and people come down expecting to be able to ride the boat. And like I say, the first year I was here, I had to turn people away. But running just that second boat with only six people on it, that makes a difference. So we've never, never had to turn anyone away since we've had the second boat on. But we want to kick that, this normal pontoon boat to the side, because it's nothing special. So, basically that's what that's about.
Okay. Hey, look, y'all got any comments or questions for Mr. Paul? Like I said, I know he's no stranger to us up here.
Yeah, you've come before and you showed us the boat you were working on.
Yes, yes.
I got a quick question. What's the maximum capacity on your big boat?
On that one right there, under the U.S. Coast Guard rules, you can only have forty-nine people without going into another category. And before I was under the Coast Guard, we could put sixty-four. But it's not worth bumping up to that many people. Plus, I don't like to put more than forty on it anyway, unless it's a private party, because people are standing up, you know, and they're mingling around. But we, we usually just put, sell forty tickets, but it's legally forty-nine.
That's still a good deal.
Now, if I was to have a, say, if the city wanted to do the deal and he goes, you's gonna have, uh, fifty-five people, I can call the Coast Guard and they'll give me a special permission to run more than, but you have to do that to be legal. But we, I don't like to put more than forty on it. Like past weekend, Meat Pie Festival, we run about, I don't, y'all, y'all might have seen me out there. We were up down that river. That boat was packed every trip all day long for two days. And one, at one trip, I had to put them to the next one and we're capacity. We can't take anymore. So it's been a hit, believe it or not. We've begun coming up on my seventh Christmas festival. And it seems like we just started this, but it's been, it's been good.
And I appreciate y'all working with me. And thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Paul. We'll see you again on the thirteenth of October, okay? All right, and I, everybody may have Mr. Paul's number if you need to ask him any questions, but I think it's pretty straightforward. All right, we've got about four resolutions on, uh, for the rest of our agenda. The first one of these resolutions, whereby Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number eighty of two thousand twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the mayor to, you know, to contract with the risk service of Louisiana I N C for the property insurance for the seat of Nacogdoches, whereas the purchase director and the finance has reviewed the proposals submitted by the property insurance for the seat of Nacogdoches, recommended the contract be awarded to the risk service of Louisiana I N C in the amount of three hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars for the policy period, October eleventh of two thousand twenty-five through October eleventh of two thousand twenty-six. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Honorable Ronnie Williams Jr. hereby authorizing power and direct design in all documents necessary for executing for all contract as above reference. And I move to adopt resolution numbers eighty of two thousand twenty-five.
A second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Ed, is there anything else?
Yeah, this is just a renewal of the same policy we had last year. Um, traveler's insurance made us increase the value of the covered property by four percent just because of inflation. And this is ultimately about a thirty-three thousand dollar increase in the premium from last year. It also, we added the water well that's on Highway four seventy-eight to the policy.
The water well, what is located? That's the new point?
Highway four seventy-eight, some people call it Waterwell Road.
Oh, okay. I don't know what you're saying.
You added what on four seventy-eight? We added what?
The water well.
Oh, we ordered, the water.
Yeah, we, we put the water well online before we are adding the, the uh plant number four, the water plant.
That's right, yeah, yeah, okay.
So is the Mill District still on this too?
What's that?
The Mill District on this.
Oh, the, the buildings are.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the buildings.
So all properties we own?
All property. Dang, that's high, but okay, next.
Any comment or questions, additional comments or questions about this? All right, seeing now, Mr. Stacy Roquevo.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall. Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Um, we have next resolution dealing with the capital improvement plan at the airport. And this is read by Councilwoman at large, Smith Kirkendall.
Again, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the state of Louisiana Department of Transportation Development Division of Aviation is charged by Title Two with the responsibility for the development of aviation facilities within the state to foster air commerce and to safeguard the interests of those engaged in all phases of the aviation, aviation industry and of the general public, whereas the city of Nacogdoches, here and after referred to as sponsor, has completed an F A A and D O T D approved master plan, action plan, and airport layout plan, which outlines the specific future development of the Nacogdoches Regional Airport. And the sponsor is desirous of implementing a portion of the approved plan recommendations, which provide for the critically needed improvements as stated below to substantially improve the safety and usability of the airport, but does not have sufficient funds of its own required for completing the needed improvements. Whereas the Louisiana D O T D Division of Aviation is authorized by Title Two to expend funds for construction or enlargement of airports for the safety and advancement of aeronautics. Now, therefore, be resolved that the sponsor does hereby formally request that D O T D Division of Aviation provide funds required to complete the airport improvements at the Nacogdoches Regional Airport, specifically as described in the capital improvement program application for state financial assistance dated September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. And now, and that the mayor of the sponsor be and is hereby authorized and directed to evidence this agreement by fixing his signature at the place provided, therefore, on this resolution and on subsequent related documents agreements as required by the rules and regulations of the Federal Aviation Administration and the State of Louisiana. And I move for adoption of resolution number zero eight-one of two thousand twenty-five.
Motion made and seconded. As I shared, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago uh at the airport, talking about the capital improvement plan. And um, you know, I think there was a piece on last week, or last meeting. But just to say that our folks, along with Ed being the director, then you got uh Foshee, that's Justin Foshee, being the manager, and then our engineers who are there, they work very hard to uh capture any improvements that we need to make there. So, Ed, do you want to kind of share? I know what, what we're kind of really looking at this next year, I guess you didn't say next year, but in this plan, some of the things we're looking to improve.
Yeah, and, well, first of all, this is something that the F A A and the L A D O T D requires us to do. It, you prioritize your projects along with the estimated cost, and that's what you use as your basis to look for grant money and get their assistance on these projects. But the first year, and I'm going by memory, I don't have it in front of me, is uh, is hanger door replacement on the hanger on the northeast corner of the airport, that's the one that Air Data Solutions uses the hanger, but the city owns the hanger. Um, they lease it from the city, and there is land acquisition south of the airport where the Oda lights are. If you see the lights that are stretched out in a row across the opposite side of the bypass that the airport is, that's the Oda lights. That is not on city property, that's property that we lease. Um, there is a study in engineering for a taxi lane, so to speak, around potentially new um tea hanger, and then the other is for the road, Wallenberg Road itself, that comes off a fairground road into the airport. So that's, that's the four items for this coming year, that we, that we're seeking money to get. I'm pretty sure we'll get the hanger doors, uh, that's priority number one, but everything after that, we're, we're just trying to make it happen.
Did you mention the one about the weather? Did you mention that one?
Which one?
You know, that kind of.
Oh, the A W O S?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a state-only project, so it'll be, um, it, it's on our list.
But it's not part of this capital plan?
Well, it is, it is, but I don't know that it's this year, I'd have to look at it again, but the A W O S is, it's Automated Weather Observation System is what the acronym stands for. That's where, when you watch the local, the Shreveport TV news, or you go to the Weather Channel and look, that's where all the weather for Nac, weather, weather information for Nacogdoches comes from. When you see the, the wind speed, the temperature, the humidity, all, all that comes from that uh weather station at the airport.
Thought that was kind of cool enough, um, right there at the, at our airport, that that's where they're getting that information, so. Y'all got any comment or question, counsel?
I thought it was Wiley Butler.
He's got something over there, though.
Oh, he does. I don't, I don't have any questions about this, but just in, in general, with capital outlay from the state, I've, I've seen, you know, every year, they, and they're talking about the bridges across the state to be replaced, and we heard anything about ours, because I, I've been on the council nine years now, and I think my first, it was really my, it was my first term, so eight years ago or something, is when they, the state came and was like, we have to replace your bridge now, because at any minute, it could be shut down.
The downtown bridge.
It's been nine years ago.
Nothing's been done.
And so, have, have we heard anything? I mean, is this just?
I mean, though, that's not the, the capital improvement plan, but.
From the capital outlay, I'm talking from the state. I mean, that's why I said it has nothing to do with this, but I just, I decided to bring it up during this time.
Well, Ed, I know Nick, I know Nick, I know Nick is good on this, but you may know what Nick knows.
Yeah, Nick and I talk about it occasionally, and it's ninety-something percent designed. It's not complete, but it's close to being fully designed, and we're looking at, right now, and this date has changed numerous times, as Eddie mentioned, since we started it, but the latest date would be July or August of two thousand twenty-seven. So, two years out.
Thirteen years.
That's on.
Is when they would start with the temporary bridge, et cetera, et cetera.
That's, that's right, that would be the first bit of construction, which would be build a temporary bridge, remove the old bridge, build the, replace the old bridge, then remove the temporary bridge.
We'll see.
Yeah, we'll see.
And I guess some of the rationale, look, you can get bureaucratic with some, some of these agencies, but some of the rationale, I think a couple of engineers left and went somewhere else, and that kind of delayed the project a little bit, at least that's what we're told, so. Um, but no, I, I, I feel you on that. We want to get it moving and get, get it built if it's in such a poor condition.
I can't imagine if they had to shut that down.
Okay, but a, a, any, any other questions or concerns about the capital improvement plan at the airport? All right, seeing now, Mr. Stacy Roquevo.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Two more resolutions to go, and this one is read by Councilman Nelson, the next one.
Thanks, Mayor. Resolution number eighty-three of two thousand twenty-five, resolution consenting to assignment of the franchise agreement between the city of Nacogdoches and. Resolution number eighty-two of two thousand twenty-five, authorizing the mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. to award the engineering firm of Buchard Horn for the Safe Streets and Roads for All SS four A demonstration project, whereas the city of Nacogdoches was awarded eight hundred and seventy thousand in federal Safe Streets and Roads for All demonstration grant funding for construction of a project known as City of Nacogdoches Safe Streets Implementation Initiative. And whereas the required City of Nacogdoches match amount for this project is two hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for a total project budget of one million eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And whereas the project budget includes the cost of engineering services, and whereas the city of Nacogdoches issued a request for qualifications dated July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five to procure said engineering services, and whereas the deadline for responses to the request for qualifications was August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, and whereas the request for qualifications contained detailed criteria by which submittals are to be evaluated. And whereas in response to the request for qualifications, submittals were received from four engineering firms, whereas a review team consisting of Nicole Gray, city grants manager, Clarissa Brown Smith, city finance director, Ed Lee, city purchasing director, and Nick Verrett, city engineer, reviewed and evaluated the four submittals that were received based on the selection criteria contained in the request for qualifications, and whereas based on their evaluation, the review team recommends selection of the firm Buchard Horn for these engineering ser, services. Now, therefore, be it resolved that City, Nacogdoches City Council hereby authorizes Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. to award an engineering services contract for this project to the firm of Buch, Buchard Horn, and to negotiate with this firm for the fee structure and amount of compensation to be made and to execute a contract with Buchard Horn for these services. And I move to adopt resolution number eighty-two of two thousand twenty-five.
Think it.
Motion made and seconded. Um, this is a national program, Safe Streets for All. You may recall that we started first by getting a plan, um, winning grant funds to devise a plan. That was about two hundred and eighty thousand. Then we came back a couple rounds after that, and we applied for some of the infrastructure improvements. Um, so what they did of the four awards, we were one of the four throughout the state of Louisiana, and they decided to make hours of demonstration, which means it's not permanent, uh, but it does last for some time. And um, but I just want to share some of the things, I was just engaging with Nick Verrett, who's engineer. Merchant McIntyre was the lead, but obviously does some things we have to do here locally to make these things work and successful. But some of the things we're gonna get from this, um, with our match over a million dollars of a grant win, Coz Avenue access control and temporary speed tables on several city streets, including Fairgrounds, East Fifth, uh Parkway, and Hill Street as well. You see some of those speed, speed tables, and I think a couple of the places as well. Um, speed tables, if you've gone to the hospital, they're not speed bumps, but you, you know, right there by the hospital, I think we brought this up before, but if you're, I don't know, that street is a door, I think, yeah. He said is a door is what it is, so that's what a speed table is. So we'll be able to do um five or six of those throughout the city along with some other things. Again, this is demonstration, so we've applied um recently. So we got this award, I want to say, uh, maybe winter, spring of two thousand twenty, uh, four, all right? So it took a little bit more than a year to get to this point where we're bidding out for design, and that's just really working with the agreements, trying to get the agreement signed, and then you had a change of administration, and so there are some delays there, they had to do a review of all agreements. And so that's kind of some of the reason why we, why we are where we are in terms of the time, but we're moving forward. Um, we had a committee uh that selected the firm, and uh three of the people are here, so I don't know if there anything y'all want to share. Y'all gonna make me do any, many, many mo, or if somebody wants to say something, if, if, if there's anything to say.
We getting one on Welch Street too, where the school zones at, you said?
No, it didn't say Welch in here. Um, no, I don't think Welch. But that may be something, again, we did apply for a larger one, which is about six million dollar value, so. I'm not sure, I haven't read through that all the way through, but anything else, committee? Is that basically it?
I think you summed it up good, Mayor.
Right.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so this is just to accept, where's the firm from? Do we know?
I think Baton Rouge.
Okay, Baton Rouge-based firm, all right, all right, good.
What was the streets again, if you don't mind naming?
Well, for the speed tables.
Yes, for the speed.
And these are gonna be temporary speed tables. Uh, Fairgrounds, East Fifth, Parkway, Hill Street. I think you said Dixie Sanford is another, um, so roughly five, six streets that you, you'll have there.
So they're gonna put one at the top of the hill on Sanford Street, or the bottom of the hill, going around the curve on Sanford Street?
Well.
Because Sanford is like a, a, like a curve.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a good question for Nick to know exactly where it's going.
I think this firm is to determine, out of what we all submitted back in the day, they're gonna look at all that and determine which ones specifically get the test equipment to see what works, what doesn't work, and, and then move into.
Yeah, and maybe they'll determine where on those streets.
Some of them need to go in some of these neighborhoods and stuff, especially, especially by the parks and stuff, you know, majority and stuff. You know, because they can be speeding by those parks.
I've got a demand about Sylvan Drive, because they said a little boy got hit a couple of weeks ago over there. People just driving down the street real fast, so we got several areas that need to be looked at.
It's every district.
Well, and I'll just reiterate, remember, this was a demonstration grant, so it's just, it was of the four that were awarded in Louisiana. This was the smallest one, and it's kind of like, you know, Nacogdoches, do you, would you accept it or not? And of course, we're gonna accept it, even though it's not permanent.
Stretch it out and stuff and put a limit.
There's a different.
But I only said that to say, we do have the larger application that we just submitted, and it was a really well-written, well-written, excuse me, uh, application. I think it's a winning application, but obviously, the folks in D C are the ones that have determined, and that, that, that would do more. I don't know if to cover those specific streets that y'all mentioned, but that would do more than what this, this is just a smaller demonstration grant in the grand scheme.
Because I think they, they actually really spread it out, because they be flying down Amel, they, they doing about a hundred speed. From, they starting from on the police station going.
It's every district. And the target has changed since the, the program started, it's been two years, so.
Yeah.
But that's all I had to say.
So I, I think this is a start, though. I guess where we are, this is a start, and this, this helps us. Uh, any other comment about this? I think we got one from Mr. Paul. We'll get you a comment, Mr. Paul, and that's for the audience at home. Can you come to the microphone? Yeah, and you know, just like you did, I know you did it earlier, but please state your first and last name.
I'm Paul Lord, with Kane River Queen. While we're on this subject of speeding and people getting run over, I'm down on the riverfront every day, and I see people come down through there fifty, sixty mile an hour, and I've seen children almost run over. Because they, it's, it's a park, and people, they're play down there. Kids come up behind a car, and I seen almost get hit one day, and they fly down through there, and I think it's a racetrack. Right here on the riverfront, right here on our riverfront, Buro Park.
Yep.
Come down that hill and just go. It's very, I mean, I've.
They won't get too far on it.
I get myself in trouble, because I get out there and try to flag them down and stop them, then they want to beat me up. But anyway, I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
No, uh, and that's helpful, and I think this is a good conversation to be having. Remember, this is uh, comes from that federal uh, goal, if you will, vision zero. Not that you eliminate car crashes altogether, but if we can reduce those that uh cause bodily harm. So, yeah, I mean, I, we, we certainly have a need in this area to, uh, to do some things. And I think the grant allows us not only temporary infrastructure. And I think the grant allows us not only temporary infrastructure, but it also allows us to do some campaigning to try to... We've done one video, I think it was called It's Cool to Cruise, but we'll do some other things to kind of really push it out there, encouraging people to slow down. There's some other psychological things you can do too, like more trees. I know that's, that's costly, but kind of things like that, it actually slows people down a bit. So we, we do have that challenge like other cities throughout the country.
Hang on, one more question, then we can, we can go. Would this reflect on Cozer? Because I know by the elderly apartments and stuff in those little small areas and stuff like that, because they be going by ninety right there.
I'm, I'm not sure where on Cozer, but yeah, Cozer was one of the streets.
Nick expressed that there's some temporary thing on Cozer.
Yeah, Cozer's one of the...
Not a speed table, but something.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I...
In the meeting, they did talk about putting a turn, a restricted turn lane. So where you can only turn left, you can't turn both ways.
Where's that?
On Cozer, in multiple areas, putting some of the restricted, the restricted turn lanes. So it's not them, you going right and left. You know, you have people going right and left and going right and left from both sides. You have to do the restricted turn and then go down maybe further to, you know, make another turn. So it was some very interesting things that they came up with that could help reduce...
Those are things that they had on South Drive. Oh, they took them down. Them barricade, they took them down.
Well, it's still, it's still a restricted turn lane, so regardless if you have the barriers, it's still a restricted turn lane. So they were gonna use some of those.
But they had something that I was looking at when I was in Lake Charles. And I don't mean to hold on about it, but I'm, you know, since this is about the, this is my thing. But they had something in Lake Charles, familiar with something new, and I, and I meant to take a picture of it and stuff, you know, dealing with some of the highways, fishing stuff. You know, that's my main thing. And then I'm gonna relate on, you know, West Street, you know, Bayla Heights, parks at the most, that we need those things. We'll, we'll figure it out and stuff with Nick and stuff to stress this money out.
Tammy Hall. So will each council have the opportunity to select some streets in their districts?
Well, what I would say, select streets to do what?
For some speed.
Well, I think when we applied, what happened, we applied for so much more. I think our original, and our original ask was about seven or eight million dollars. I don't know if we got that. I know it was six million. I can't exactly remember all of it. So what happened, the federal government then looked, looked at it and said, hey, well, we can't give you the six or seven million you're asking for, but we can bring it down to eight hundred and eighty thousand. So we are where we are in terms of the award, and we were just at a point, what do we accept it or do we say no? We don't want your little eight hundred thousand dollars. And we, of course, said, yeah, we want, we want the eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred and seven, eight hundred and eight?
I think eight hundred and seven, yeah, like you said in the, in the deal. So that's, I'm, I'm only saying that to say, the original application certainly included much more. But obviously, you're asking the federal government, and so they then get to decide what they want to award. And so we just, we have what we have here with this particular award, but we did apply again. I think it's a really good grant, and we should know, we should know, I think by December, whether or not we got that one. That'll, that'll be able to do more. And that's really what I could say about that. We're trying to get more funded for it. Okay? All right, any other comment or question here? All right, seeing now, Mr. Stacy Rolcarvo.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes. All right, that motion carries. All right, we have one more resolution on the agenda,
and Councilman Harrington is the lucky person.
Resolution eighty-three of two thousand twenty-five, resolution consenting to assignment of the franchise agreement between the city of Natchitoches and Southern Light LLC to Unity Gulfco LLC. Southern Light LLC currently holds a franchise agreement with the city of Natchitoches for the operation and maintenance of a fiber optic transmission line within certain public rights away within the city of Natchitoches. And Southern Light LLC desires to assign said franchise agreement to Unity Fiber Gulfco LLC. And the city, I'm sorry, signee agrees to assume all rights, obligations, and responsibilities under the existing franchise agreement between the city of Natchitoches and Southern Light LLC. And the city of Natchitoches deems it appropriate to consent to such assignment subject to signee's compliance with all terms and conditions of the original franchise agreement. I move to adopt resolution eighty-three of two thousand twenty-five.
I see.
All right, motion made and seconded. This is not a new agreement. It deals with underground dark fiber. And one of the big things is the change of the name of the company from Southern Light to Unity Gulfco LLC. It's one of the big things we have. And I'm not sure if there's any remark from either Tim or Ed or, I don't know who else was included on these emails, but we're good.
But how that reads, everything's the same. Nothing changes. Just changing the name.
I think that's pretty much right. I don't know if any fees, maybe the fees may be adjusted a little bit, but...
They said nothing changed.
Oh, oh, just a, oh, just a name change. Okay, all right, got you.
If they want to make any different other changes, we'll come back to them.
Got you, got you. All right, so yeah, thank you for clearing that up, for clearing that up for me. Any comments or questions about this particular item? All right, seeing now, Mr. Stacy Rolcarvo.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith Kirkendall.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next, we've got the financial report from Clarissa Brown Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. The first slide you'll see is a pie chart of total collections of sales tax. In the red section, that's what has been collected for the city of Natchitoches. And year to date, we are at nine point nine million dollars. Go to the next slide. So I know it's a little small, but this just shows on the calendar year and as of August the thirty-first, what has been collected for the city of Natchitoches. And for the month of August, we collected one point one million dollars. And we're slightly down one point eight four percent. Not alarming, because we've been exceeding previous years, previous year stats for the entire year. This is the first month that we've seen a slight decline, and it only resulted in twenty-two thousand dollars. So nothing to be alarmed about, but there is a slight decline for the month of August when compared, compared to the previous year. The slide right next to it, you don't have to flip it again yet. It's okay. The slide right, right next to it just shows the accumulated number here for year to date, and this is on the calendar year. And again, we collected nine point nine million dollars, and we are up six point seven percent. So overall, for the entire calendar year, we are up six point seven percent. That difference is six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So we collected that more this year than we did over last year. Okay, so the next two slides kind of just gives the, some of the same information, but this is our fiscal year versus our calendar year. So fiscal year is starting in June. So you only see three months' worth of information. Again, this one just shows per month and how that measured up in the previous year at the same time. And we are down twenty-two thousand, which resulted in one point eight point cent down for that particular month. The slide right next to it gives you a cumulative number. And we have year to date collected one point one four. And that is for the first three months of our fiscal year. Again, we're slightly down, looking from last year at the same time, and we're down about three percent here. So it never resulted in a forty-six thousand dollars. Again, not very alarming, but definitely want to keep an eye on it. Don't want, don't want it to become a trend, for sure. Again, some of the same information, just in a different format of collections here. Year to date for the fiscal year, three point six million dollars, up by eight percent, up by eight percent. So that's very good. And then I think my next one is a duplicate, so excuse me for that. I got a little happy with my scans. But definitely up over the fiscal year. The next information that you'll see is reported on our TIF districts and our EDD. So for TIF District, the Hotel Tif C, TIF District A, we are up sixteen percent for the calendar year. So we are up, our total collections year to date is forty-seven thousand dollars. So we are up sixteen percent, so looking good there.
Can I say that that's probably gonna be your hotel here?
This is Chateau Saint Denis.
And it's a church street as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, I just wanted to say...
For some reason, we labeled it Chateau Saint Denis, but church street as well.
As well, okay.
Okay, and then for TIF C, the ho, this is the hotels on the bypass, I forty-nine area. We are up seventeen percent there. Total collections for this year is one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So both of those are looking good, trending upward for the calendar year. Right beside it, you'll see some of our economic development districts. For Economic Development District A, we are, we are down slightly, two percent. Only a five hundred and thirty-three dollar difference, so not too alarming. Year to date collections is up forty thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. For Economic Development District C, we are up sixteen percent, which is really, really good. We're up about forty-nine thousand over last year, so our total collections is three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred dollars for the current year.
And EDD C, that's gonna be I forty-nine, University Park.
I knew you were gonna ask me that.
No, I got, I got my sheet.
You got your paper? Okay.
I'm telling you what it is.
Okay, we are prepared. Me and Miss Stacy worked hard to make sure we were prepared for those questions. But yeah, so that's, that's like your downtown area, Lafayette Street, Second Street, Church Street. And then C is your I forty-nine and your University Parkway areas. They are, EDD A is slightly down, but that's the ones that's in Lafayette Street, Second Street, Church Street, in that area. Well, it's not just restaurants, it's any businesses in that area. And then again, EDD C is up sixteen percent, and that's out on your I forty-nine, University Parkway areas.
So it's not too bad. We've gone up, gone down.
Yeah, and, and the, to be honest, your up is a lot more than your down, so it's, it's been really, really good. So we hope to continue that trend. Economic Development District D, which is your Hobby Lobby, they are slightly down two percent. So nothing alarming there. Year to date, they've collected thirty-five thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. EDD E, which is your River South Commons area, they are up sixteen percent, which is really good to see as we go into our holiday months. So you definitely like to see that trending upward. So they, total collections year to date is seventy-five thousand fifty-nine dollars. EDD F, which is our Mill Street, which is gonna be your brewery, the, and Riverside, had to think about Riverside. So they are up less than a third of a percent, but still up. And they have collected twenty-three thousand forty-nine dollars year to date. So those are your Economic Development and TIF District numbers, year to date.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, that tells us that your wife, Mrs. Williams, is gonna have to do a little more shopping at...
And Hobby Lobby, yeah.
They should get uplift when Super One opens.
I, I, I think, I think you, I think you might be right. Yeah, I think it's gonna drive more traffic over there.
Yep.
All right, any questions from Mrs. Brown Smith? And again, we did put, they, they worked hard to put the districts up there so we could see them and know which ones we're talking about, because you, you hear those letters and you're like, oh, where's that one, where's that one? So we'll, we'll get everybody this little cheat sheet that they gave me today, so it'll be helpful. All right, thank you, Mrs. Brown Smith. Our next meeting is gonna be on the thirteenth of October. We always encourage people to download, to go Natchitoches app. There are plenty of events going on. You know, we'll talk about those in just a moment, but, and then also the regroup, Natchitoches regroup, where we put updates where concerning road closures, anything storm related that we have to deal with. All right, we're just getting to a few more announcements. Yeah. Okay, look, so we, we, we want to support our local high school teams, you know, football. And we had a home game this week, which was the, was at the nineteenth. And so it looks like we're gonna be away at Parkway this coming week at Natchitoches Central. So that means St. Mary's, which is the next one, should be at home. Let's see, the twenty-sixth? Yeah, they're at Turf Stadium. They're playing the Manny Tigers. All right. Should be a pretty good game at seven PM, so go out and support those, our St. Mary's Tigers on this weekend. And then, of course, Northwestern State University, they've got a bit of a road deal going on. Looks like they're off this Saturday coming, and then they'll pick back up on the fourth, which happens to be homecoming. And there's several things going on that particular day, weekend, so. But it's exciting, because we certainly love to welcome people to our city. All right, we could hit the next one? All right, so we've got some other announcements we want to share with you. Youth Fishing Derby at the Natchitoches National Fish Hatchery. This is free, and it's taking place this Saturday from eight AM to noon, so really cool thing. So hands-on activities and animals, bring your own fishing gear. A limited number of rods will be available. There can be prizes and giveaways. So something to take your little child to this particular weekend, so put that on your calendar and do it. All right, we've got the Natchitoches Car Show coming up. This has grown every year. I think they were telling me, Mrs. Dickens, how many you want to have entered this year so far?
I think it's about three hundred and forty-eight.
Three hundred and forty-eight, so I think that's... It'll be five hundred, so it'll be on Second Street, and you know, that's, that, that's really cool. Again, you've got Central's homecoming that Friday, you've got Northwestern's that Saturday, you've got the car show going on. So there will be plenty to do in the city of Natchitoches on that particular day. All right, we're looking forward to it. National Night Out is gonna be Tuesday, October the seventh. We've got the fire department along with the Natchitoches Police Department participating. These are the locations we have so far. We've got, and I think there's a way in which for people to sign up, but Melrose Avenue, Tammy Lane, happening from five to eight, South Town is going to be, Pennyam Community is gonna be from six to eight. And then Ross, Ross Williams Park is gonna be from six to eight as well. So I don't know if there's anybody know about any others that people are planning? All right, these are the ones that are registered that we know about and certainly want to put that out. And it's all about community partnerships, as it says there, between, you know, police and even the fire department. All right? So we also have that same week, the Seventh Annual Fire Prevention, Prevention, excuse me, Open House. It's always really cool. Now we got Ash the Alligator. We've already had Sparky and Smokey, and there'll be other friends there. Live fire demos, food giveaways, food games and giveaways. Chief, when is there anything else to say besides what the flyer has?
Just come out and have some fun. Come meet, come meet all the local fire departments. So every fire department in the parish is invited also to be there, so you don't just have to be a city resident, it's for the parish, so everybody come out.
Everybody, not just city, everybody all over the parish. There's always good support at this event. You have different vendors set up, so it's always really cool, and, and it's, it's a great time, great family fun. All right, Taptober's another event we've got taking place in October. It's gonna be the eighteenth of October, so there's gonna be beer and wine tastings, and they're gonna have the football game on as they always do, food trucks, kids' zones, and a full slate of live music. So that is a really, really good festival, I think, that's growing in popularity. So, and they have the individuals, looks like Little Texas, is that Timothy Wayne I see there? So this is put on by N R M C Foundation, so they do such a great job of this. So again, mark that on your calendar as well. All right, Dueling Pianos, Clean Ends Revenge, this is, it's a ticketed event. And, you know, they've got some things taking place on the twenty-fourth of October at the Flying Heart Brewery. And they got fifteen dollars to get in, the tables, VIP tables are seventy-five bucks. And it's four tickets on the table, tickets only available in-store and go on sale on October the first, all right? So that seems like something very interesting to be a part of. So look, you got things happening in the city of Natchitoches. Is that the last one? Okay, no, we wanted to show you this one about the fair as well, so that's this... Okay, no, we wanted to show you this one about the fair as well, so that's, uh, this weekend, actually, the fair is taking place. The rodeo was, uh, the past weekend, but this one coming is gonna be the fair, so admission is five bucks. Uh, uh, children two, children two and under are free, and then armbands are twenty-five dollars purchased at the carnival. So again, that's, that's really, really cool. Look, um, we've got, you got the video ready to go? All right, look, I got a video featuring a handsome young man who's eaten a few meat pies over the, over the years, so, um, I just wanna. We'll get the volume, is the volume up?
Chef Williams.
So October third is a big day where we're officially launching this program, or let me say initiative. And I say better than that, movement, as I want to call it. Look, we are not, uh, no apologies about it, we're trying to get people here and the tourists who come, uh, mainly the people here. Um, look, before you click Amazon, before you go there, support our businesses, our brick and mortar businesses that are right here in the City of Natchitoches, it's gonna be good for all of us, and, uh, we just think that is a better way. And we have stats that say, when you spend your money here locally, what that does for our economy, it supports jobs, it supports your local government, actually, so we're gonna make a really big effort to not just, you know, a couple days of, of the year, or a week in, in the year, but we want this to become something that's a part of the culture here in the City of Natchitoches, where you focus on, cause you got some great businesses, you're looking for that Father's Day, Mother's Day gift, you've got some great businesses that have what you need, and so we just need to know about that. We've become so used to going to Amazon and these other places, but we want you to shop Natchitoches first, or ask Natchitoches first, okay?
Before you click.
Before you click, there you go, before you click. All right, we do have, we have something else? Oh, oh, something, Beatles and Brews, I think we had this up the last time, didn't we? So y'all, this is the Council on Age, and, um, it's a benefit with the Council on Age, and so we want to give it. It's gonna be November sixth at six-thirty at Flying Heart.
Johnny.
What's that?
Johnny Earthquake.
Johnny Earthquake and the Moon Dogs are gonna be there.
I'll be singing a few songs.
And we're looking for sponsors.
I think last year they maybe sang like nine songs or something.
Look, so we're gonna get this, we're gonna make sure we share this and we get it to the, uh, we get it to the, uh, app and everything, okay? All right, thanks a lot, Councilman Lloyd, for reminding us of that. If there's nothing else, y'all, we will.
Motion made.
Yes, ma'am?
Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, Sunday.
Okay, yeah, y'all, we've been announcing, uh, a couple things, I should say. We've got a video out there about Natchitoches uplift, so that's where people who are inspiring entrepreneurs to, uh, inspiring entrepreneurs to come out tomorrow at six o'clock at the, um, Ben Johnson Auditorium, I believe it is. Uh, Ben Johnson Educational Center, and then Sunday on the twenty-eighth, we're gonna be at Ben Park, uh, with vendors and such as that. So that's gonna start at what time on Sunday?
Sunday at four.
Sunday at four, so I think we've got a flyer out there about that, so, um, again, we'll continue to remind people about what's going on with that. So lots of great things going on, all right? At this time, y'all, we'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion made a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, have a great night, folks.